Welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, May 4th, 2020. I call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Recognition of members present, all councilors are present. At this time, we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Under general, there are no items with the exception of, I just wanted to point out that today is International Firefighters' Day. So we want to thank the firefighters for all that they do for us in our community, day in and day out. Also let everyone know that May 3rd through the 9th is Corrections Officers Week. In our proclamation, 5187 from 1984, Ronald Reagan declared that Corrections Officers Week would be the first week, full week of May. So thank you to all the corrections officers out there. And last, but certainly not least, in this pandemic and in these times, is Nurses Week 2020, which we celebrate today, May 6th through the 12th. In proclamation, 4913, in 1982, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed that May 6th would be National Recognition Day for nurses. And then that was expanded to a full week later on. So we couldn't do it without them with the pandemic that's going on. So for corrections officers, firefighters, and nurses, we thank you very, very much. With that, that is all I have for general. Moving on to item five, committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee correspondents from the councilors? Councilor McPhail.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to update that we were able to hold our monthly meeting for Saco Main Street via Zoom. And we also were able to do a Zoom meeting for the subcommittee on the Design Committee side. Just wanted to let everybody know that spring is coming and we're not stopping. We're getting ready to do our annual flowers towards the end of May, 1st of June. So be looking for those. We've had discussions on getting the flags out on Main Street again this summer. And Rob Biggs has been working diligently with our local businesses, helping them to assist with long and short-term goals and addressing any needs that they may have with the ongoing situation so that they've got a place to go and questions to get answered.
Thank you, Councilor McPhail. Councilor Menthorn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to point out, as some of you have probably already seen, that transit is back up and running on a limited schedule and things are moving forward. No incidents yet, so everything looks pretty good that way. And you do have to wear a mask if you're going to ride the bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Menthorn. Any further correspondence to council? Seeing no hands raised, no further correspondence. Moving on to item six, public comments. The Administrator Kean Rath, have you received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
I do not have any public comment for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak before the council? Seeing no one seeking recognition and no public comment. Moving on to the item seven, which is approval of the minutes for April 27th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilor Menthorn to approve the April 27th, 2020 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for a roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
No.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnson?
No.
Motion passes 5-2. Moving on to item, there are no consent items, so we'll move right into item nine, which is action items. We have subitem A, which is 90 Temple Street, Chapter 81 Review. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. This property experienced a fire in 2012 and the roof has been left open to the elements since then, the past eight years. Previous owner abandoned the property sometime after the fire. And in 2016, the city obtained the property through tax foreclosure. A timeline of city actions relative to this site is included in the enclosed materials. In February 2020, staff completed several site visits. And with the collaboration of the Historic Preservation Commission, hired allied engineering on the city's general engineering services list, complete a structural engineering assessment, report enclosed. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended that the property be sold at its February 26th meeting. Planning Board recommended its report to sell the property to the city council at its April 7th meeting. Planning Board forwarded a positive recommendation of its report to the city council on April 7th. Historic Preservation Commission recommended that the property undergo a Chapter 81 review process on February 26th and provide feedback about the draft RFP on March 11th. I move to schedule a public hearing on May 18th regarding the following order. Be it ordered that the city council hereby authorizes the city administrator to initiate a request for proposal for disposition of the city-owned property at 90 Temple Street.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Seeing no discussion. I believe we have City Planner Emily Cole Prescott is in attendance. Is there anything that Emily would like to bring forward to the council on this? I don't see Emily's hand raised to bring anything forward. So with that, we will go for a roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to item 10, which is new business. We have a budget update. So at this point, I'll defer to City Administrator Kean Rath and City Finance Director, Glennis Salz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to open it up, as you know, many communities are grappling with declining revenues in light of the COVID-19 crisis. Glennis and I sat down over the past week to take a further look at our current revenues, where the projections are, and also take into consideration some of the guidance offered as to where we should be curtailing our revenues to prepare for obvious economic uncertainty. With that, we found, I don't like Glennis against the details, approximately $1 million in budget revenues that we think should be curtailed out of the already proposed budget. We did further ask our department heads to reexamine their budgets and find any other room that they may have to offer up some savings in order to begin to address the shortfall. But we have identified a number of other areas where we could make up some ground here. Glennis will get into those. And you will basically have a menu of options to choose from in order to make up this approximately $1 million in loss of budget revenues. But we think this is the prudent course to go. We think this is a wise action to be prepared for possible now the uncertainty. It, we hope to avoid department operational lines if possible, but there are a number of options. But we believe this is the prudent course to go in light of the current situation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Glennis for the details. And I'll look forward to her presentation and your questions following. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kean Rath. So I'm going to share my screen. There are two pieces to this presentation. The first part is what's going on in fiscal year 2020. I know there have been some concerns. Some of our sister cities in Maine have been facing some current financial strains. And so I wanted to give council a preliminary view of where we are year-to-date through the month of April. And then I'll be pivoting over to fiscal year 2021. And we'll be discussing some of the findings that I had in my analysis of revenue there. Switching over to the April budget update. The first thing I wanted to give, councilors and any citizens who are viewing this, a certain level of comfort in that I am in the numbers every single morning. I check our bank account for our cash position every single morning. And I am updating the budget, the budget document every morning, taking a quick peek at the line items. So nothing in what I'm presenting this evening to you is a surprise. But I think it's valuable to share the actual numbers that I'm seeing and give councils some insight into the details. So first and most importantly, in terms of our cash position, as of this morning, the combined city and school operating counts had a pool cash position of $29,417,372. This proves out that we remain in a strong position to meet all financial obligations from a cash flow standpoint. Our current cash position is higher than the cash flow projections I had put together at the start of the year. Much of this is due to delay in certain construction costs related to the bond issuances. So those funds remain on our balance sheet as of today. Digging into the monthly update for April. Again, this is a preliminary update. It typically takes us a full week after the end of the month to run all of our month-end closed journal entries. So this update is excluding a few of those journal entries, but it still gives us a good sense of where we are year-to-date. Overall, the undesignated fund balance for the general fund is at $18,40166, or 32.77% of the adopted budget for fiscal year 2020. This is well above the mandated 16.67% per city ordinance. Additionally, we have two months left in the year with budget expenses of $12,95,252 left to be spent, plus $241,051 in net risk on the revenue side. Saco is well positioned to meet all financial obligations and still have more than the mandated minimum 8.33% in unassigned fund balance at the close of the fiscal year. Expenses are tracking 7% behind, while revenues are tracking 1% ahead of forecast. So that's important to know. We are still tracking ahead of forecast for net favorability in the budget of $3.9 million. Currently, total revenues are 1% or $551,941 ahead of forecast. So far, we have $237,690 in surplus revenues and $451,741 in total risk for a net risk of $241,051. With our unassigned fund balance currently at $18,40166, City of Saco stands well-prepared to cover this net risk through the end of the fiscal year. Surplus revenues, these are revenues that have come in above the full-year budget. So that's realized surplus, $237,690. Code enforcement fees, interest earnings, and planning and economic development fees have already exceeded their full-year budget. On the other hand, we have revenue risks. So these are revenue lines that are tracking behind. City clerk fees, ambulance fees, police fees, and sale of city assets are all running behind forecasts and are subject to revenue loss because of measures implemented to suffer, to slow the spread of COVID-19. If we were to collect no new revenue, the remainder of the fiscal year on these lines, we would lose $451,741. The remaining revenues are on or ahead of forecast through April to the tune of $515,826. Before I pivot over to the expense side, are there any questions from council?
Glennis, Paul Menthorn, do we have an issue where we would possibly be above the 16.67 ending the fiscal year?
I would be very surprised to see that because of some of the risk on our revenue lines. It really does depend on how, I think that's more a matter of the department side and whether departments expend their full operational lines through the end of the fiscal year. I am not forecasting above 16%. In the initial review I had done for the city administrator's budget book, I forecasted 15% at the end of the year in unassigned fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glennis, which one of these expenses that are behind, which ones are true risk? And what I mean by that is, for example, we're not collecting some city registration fees just because it's cut down, let's go with car registration. However, they're still going to get paid to us just because of how it's defined. So what is actually the true risk, I guess I'm asking?
So I would say, so excise is currently on target. And that's simply because we have a conservative budgeting approach. So we were actually budgeting almost $600,000 lower in fiscal year 2020 than we received in full year 2019. So even though there's been a significant falloff, about 50% year-over-year in excise revenue for the latest six weeks, we're still tracking ahead. Now, in terms of through the end of the year, I did ask the police chief that question. He said that citizens have 30 days after the end of the emergency order in order to register their cars. The City of Saco uses modified accrual accounting, which means revenues then were received within 60 days of the close of the fiscal year can be counted towards that fiscal year. So for example, if the emergency order were to end as late as July 31st and we were to receive that excise in the month of August, we could still book it for fiscal year 2020. So I'm anticipating that we'll have a bounce back and be able to realize that excise revenue in fiscal year 2020. Since we are booking, looking at conservative excise for fiscal year 2021, if the bounce back comes even later, it will be recognized as surplus on excise revenue in fiscal year 2021. So you're absolutely correct. The money's going to come in. The big concern is, can our cash flow carry us through the trough? And what I'm seeing right now in our cash position is we're capable of doing that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Finance Director Salas at this moment in time? Seeing no further questions, Finance Director Salas, please continue.
Thank you. So now we're going to pivot over to the expenses side. So right now, expenses are tracking 7% behind forecast. A piece of this is that a new pay type was created to track payroll expenses related to COVID-19. And there were some challenges with properly booking that new pay type to the general ledger. So there's been a bit of a delay in posting the April 24th payroll. That accounts for between 4% and 5% of underspends in most departments. So you'll see in my analysis, I have excluded departments where the underspend was only about 5% or less. The Assessor is tracking 9% behind forecast. We have not been billed for the second half of the shared assessor with Bit of Hurt, so that's a big piece of that. City administration is 9% behind forecast. Contracted services, mostly related communications, are tracking a bit behind. And I have asked Director Roy to look into the timing of when we'll be getting those bills. The city clerk is 6% behind forecast. Preparation for elections has been delayed because the election has been delayed. And I am working with her on making sure those funds are expended prior to the close of the fiscal year. Council's 36% behind forecast. This is because quarterly payments for councilors have been paid but not posted. Fringe benefits are 10% behind forecast. I am having our internal auditor investigate the retirement contributions because they are coming in light for fiscal year 2020. And I want to make sure that we properly budgeted on the outset for fiscal year 2020. And if there are any problems with the budgeting for retirement, that we fix it for fiscal year 2021 because that could be some savings. Human Resources is 19% behind forecast and is likely to be underspent through the balance of the year. I have recommended to the city administrator that we encumber funds from this year's budget to conduct any necessary studies that may come out of the internal audit of that department. IT is 13% behind forecast. IT Director Ryan Penaro plans to encumber funds previously appropriated for security threat study to implement new software solutions that will improve his department's ability to manage remote work, which has been a significant change for the city. Insurance is 26% behind forecast. We do have $60,000 in real savings due to a realignment of insurance premiums between the city and the school. These are firm savings expected to be realized at the close of the year. Planning and economic development is 7% behind forecast. The city is going to realize some savings on employee turnover and a couple of contracts have not yet been awarded. Police Department is 9% behind forecast. There are a couple administrative positions open currently. Savings on the open and DEA position are being offset by a loss of state revenue. Public Works is 10% behind forecast. There was some administratively enforced reduction shift hours to minimize cross-contamination that has slowed some work for contracted projects. And I am working with the Public Works Director to identify what real savings will be towards the end of the year versus what is still going to be expended. The school budget is 10% behind forecast, which is just a product of the timing of the monthly transfers. That line will be on target at year's end. The solicitor is $4,769 over the full-year budget. I do have a list of qualified TIF solicitor costs, which will be reclassed within the next couple of weeks. Supported entities are 5% ahead of forecast. The library is still one month ahead. The last payment will be made in May and then the budget will be in line. And transfers are $330,298 over budget. This is primarily due to TIF transfers, specifically valuation growth in the downtown TIF district increased this line higher than what had been estimated at the time of the fall. So in summary, I hope this report provides council some comfort level that we are well-prepared to weather even worst-case projections through the remainder of the fiscal year. Thanks to years of conservative financial management, the City of Saco started the year with nearly two months expenses and unassigned fund balance. In budgeting non-tax revenue, the city averages the prior three years of full-year actuals. So our budget revenues were well below the peak full-year revenues that we enjoyed in fiscal year 2019. Although some in the past have questioned the ethics of levying taxes against such conservative revenue forecast, this approach has set our city up well to maintain strong service levels through this unprecedented shutdown of the global economy. Once again, I'll pause and see if there are any questions on the fiscal year 2020 portion of the update.
Thank you, Glennis. Are there any questions for Glennis at this moment in time? Seeing no questions at this time. Glennis, please continue.
Thank you. So now, we are going to pivot over to updated revenue assumptions for fiscal year 2021. So I alluded to this briefly during the joint school board and city council workshop last Wednesday. I did attend a helpful workshop put on by MMA about budgeting in uncertain economic times. And I used some of those insights, as well as other insights, gained from conversations with City Administrator Kean Rath and some of our partners at the state level to put together this review. There are three places that are significant revenue sources that we are looking at having to make adjustments for fiscal year 2021. The first of these is state revenue sharing. So City Administrator Kean Rath has received guidance from the State Treasurer's Office to expect state revenue sharing to be 20% lower than originally forecast. Personally, I believe that's a little bit conservative. I did review the city's financials from the 2008 crisis and actual state revenue sharing declined just 4.34% versus the prior year. Another number to factor in is that direct tourism spending in Maine is 11% of the state's GDP. So even a $0 summer tourism, summer in tourism would still only affect roughly 11% of state tax receipts. However, I do believe it's advisable to follow state guidance. And therefore, I am recommending the council consider a 20% decline in state revenue sharing, which would translate into a loss of $417,916 in revenue for fiscal year 2021. The next significant revenue item is motor vehicle excise. I did an analysis of our motor vehicle excise revenues for the latest 12 months. The city received $818,316 in excise revenue for new year-one vehicles, which represents 18.8% of all excise revenues. This is similar to other municipalities. Assuming that new car sales will decline by 2/3, or 66.7%, which again, I would say is a little bit conservative. But assuming that new car sales do decline 66.7% in the next 12 months, and also assuming that those consumers who would have purchased a new car simply keep the one that they already own, we would be looking at a loss of $394,469, or about 10% on motor vehicle excise revenue. The third major area likely to be affected is ambulance transport revenue. Anecdotally, the fire chief had mentioned to me that he was seeing a drop in calls. And so I asked him to pull some actual numbers. In March, ambulance transports were down 13%. And in April, ambulance transports were down 24%. Separately, we have seen declining performance on ambulance collections with our current collections partners and report. We are working on a plan to improve collection rates, but we're unlikely to see results from that activity until at least the second half of fiscal year 2021. Again, we're sort of taking a conservative approach here. And so I'm recommending that we budget a 30% drop in ambulance transfer revenue, which is a loss of $20287 for fiscal year 2021. The next largest item is Parks and Recreation, which is typically around $1 million a year in revenue. In conversations with Director Ryan Summer, he believes the recreation programming is likely to still be close to $1 million for fiscal year 2021. This is a $71,000 decline versus the maintenance of effort budget. But he says he can offset the loss of revenue with savings on programming costs because of reduced participation numbers. And that's not because of reduced demand, but more because of safety measures that he's planning to implement. So I don't see, based on conversations with him, any impact to the general fund budget because the loss of revenue will be offset by savings on costs. Finally, code enforcement. Interestingly enough, code enforcement revenues are actually up 300% versus prior year in the latest six weeks. Code enforcement revenues benefit from a long pipeline, which starts in the planning process and can extend for a year or more. Anecdotally, in conversations with Planning and Economic Director Denise Clovat, there is, does not appear to be a slowdown in projects coming into the Planning and Economic Development Department. There's still a lot of activity and interest in the City of Saco. So I don't anticipate a significant decline in code enforcement revenues. And I would recommend that they remain where they are at currently budgeted. The balance of revenues for the fiscal year 2021 budget, including clerk fees, cable franchise, police fines, and interest, are just 1.15 million or 1.8% of all revenues. Plus, these particular lines are unlikely to be significantly impacted by economic uncertainty once City Hall is up and running. In conclusion, the city is facing a likely revenue shortfall of $1,02672 due to economic uncertainty due to the public health emergency related to COVID-19. In addition to walking the city administrator's budget back to a means-of-effort budget, which councilors have already suggested may be their approach, the city should look to find additional savings below maintenance of effort in order to ensure a flat mill rate for fiscal year 2021. The city administrator and I work closely with city staff to identify potential savings so the council could feel like they had options in terms of how to approach the shortfall. Below is a list of the most significant savings. There's the potential to reduce capital projects by 50%. That would be $384,225. We have a couple of city assets which could be sold. There's an overlay amount budgeted in the amount of $360,464. This was a mechanism by which the unassigned fund balance was going to be paid back for funds borrowed to finish the public works facility in fiscal year 2020. It's essentially funded by sale of the old public works facility. And instead of putting it back to the unassigned fund balance, we could use it to cover the shortfall. And finally, there's some additional funding left over from the Army Corps of Engineers project match in the amount of $117,000. That comes to a total of potential savings and new revenues of 1.2 million. So there's some flexibility there. We could do a couple of these. We could adjust all of them. We could make different assumptions. could make different assumptions, but we wanted to provide some options for the council to consider. In addition to these identified savings, there is another 161,000 qualified general fund expenses that could be migrated to TIPS. However, based on council feedback, it seems like there was preference to keep the budgets where they were. So next steps, my office would appreciate in order to ensure a clean record of changes from the city administrators printed budget to council approval, that there be a council resource nominated to propose a budget amendment that includes both adjustments to revenue of $1,012,672 and offsetting savings or new revenue as identified in the menu options. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Are there any questions for Glennis at this moment in time? Counselor Copeland? Counselor Copeland, you're muted. Okay.
Um, I just see the 12th school street there and the Army Corps project match for the river cleanup. And for me, they're off the list. I mean, I can't even imagine that we would consider that. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any other questions for or comments for Finance Director Salas? Seeing no questions or comment, is there a council resource that would like to propose this amendment? Or propose this for the, so that Finance Director Salas can prepare this for our meeting? Counselor Archer?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Thank you, Counselor Archer.
You're welcome.
Finance Director Salas, I think I think Counselor Archer will be the right resource for that. City Administrator Kena?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to add, I think there'll need to be some discussion and guidance on, you know, the options were presented above, but you know, I don't know if the council wants to do that list of options, or you want to pick and choose which ones, or maybe talk about some other things. But that's that 1.255 is with those options you see there. So if there's any hesitancy, as Counselor Copeland just mentioned, on a couple of them, then maybe that discussion should be had.
I think Counselor Archer can, you know, has said he'd be willing to make that motion. And if there's amendments to that motion when it comes forth, we can make those amendments and then move forward.
Why can't we make those amendments now?
There's no motion to vote on Counselor Copeland. So there's, right now, it's just discussion based. So when there's a motion-
If we take it off the motion, then we don't have to deal with it.
You don't have a vote to take things off the motion. You can suggest it, but there's no vote.
I'm suggesting it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Copeland. But there's no vote to take it off. This is what's been suggested. And Counselor Archer said that he would make that motion at the time when it's probable to do so. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. 509 Buxton Road, I'm assuming that's the assessed value, $193,000?
Yes, that's correct. That's the assessed value from the, from the property card at the time of foreclosure.
Okay. That's probably a bit rich as far as what the value of the actual land is. My recollection, it's kind of wet and I'm not sure how many lots could actually be subdivided on it. So maybe that's a question for the planning office or code as far as, you know, what potential lots could be cut out of the 16 eight years that are there. I mean, I'm all for selling it. I thought we were actually going to get rid of it last summer, but didn't happen. So I'd just be curious to know more about, you know, what the value of that land, if it was subdivided out, would be.
Thank you, Counselor. Finance Director Salas?
I will certainly reach out to planning to get some insight. I'm sure we would have to route it through the chapter 81 process. So as part of that process, I assume that information would be raised to council and to the public in general who might be interested in purchasing.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further questions or comments for Finance Director Salas?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Finance Director Salas?
So the Army Corps project match river cleanup. Director Fox had just asked me to clarify that that was a project related to the river cleanup that the Army Corps did. It was funds set aside for river cleanup. And in the end, the river wasn't as dirty as had been anticipated. So those funds are available, whether to be re-appropriated for another capital project or is indicated in this as a way to cover the revenue shortfall and in a transfer back into the general fund.
Finance Director Salas, why don't we bring Director Fox forward in case there are any further questions on that? Andrew, can we promote Director Fox? Thank you very much, Director Fox.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Just turned a video on for you.
Good evening, Director Fox. Thank you very much for joining us. Just in case there are any questions at this point. I see a question from Counselor Johnston. Counselor Johnston? Counselor Johnston, you're muted at the moment.
Thank you. Could we get a breakout of the reduction of the capital projects by 50% at some point? Doesn't have to be now.
Yeah, absolutely. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be across the board because some of them are tied to contracts or tied to shared projects with other communities. So it would, it would be about half, half of what you see. There's half of the annuals that we fund, but you could see a breakout of that. It left ones that were involved with matches that leverage state paving funds and things like that. But it would be like, you know, the energy, the energy efficiency account that we fund each year would be in, would be in that cut as well. I think the biggest one I can probably clarify now is that, so that there were two, there were two Army Corps dredging line items in our capital plan. One was from 2018 where we jointly, we had to clean up all known debris in the river. And we worked with Bitterford and spent almost $200,000 on the first, went preparing for the first half of the dredging. And we actually thought we, then we appropriated another 100,000, or council did for that following year, thinking that we were going to have even more debris to remove. And we did not end up having to hire a debris contractor. So now that the Army Corps dredging is completely cleared up, done, and they're, they're gone for the foreseeable future, that money is available. And that's all it was appropriated for. So it serves no purpose, no purpose towards that specific project anymore.
Thank you, Director Fox. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So Director Fox, could that, could that 117,547 be diverted? Even though it was assigned for a project match for river cleanup, could that be diverted to Camp Ellis issues as we prepare for next snow season or next season and any major storms?
It could really be put wherever you see fit. It was, it wasn't a project contractual match. We were just obligated to clean up any known debris. It has served that purpose. So it would, by default, 17,000 of it would fall back to the general fund after being in the capital plan for three years. Next year, and then the year after, the 100,000 that was appropriated afterward would fall back to the general fund for whatever, or be re-appropriated. It could be appropriated into the capital plan or any other, any other place you see fit.
Thank you, Director Fox. Any further questions for Director Fox or Finance Director Salas? Seeing no further questions. And no counselor seeking recognition. Director Fox, thank you very much. Director Salas? Do you have anything further on the budget update?
That's everything I had prepared for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions or respond as questions come up during deliberation.
Thank you very much. Any questions at this time? Seeing no questions, moving on to new business item B, council deliberation on the budget. City Administrator Kena? Do we have any?
I don't really have anything as far as opening remarks or anything, but this is the council's opportunity to begin discussions, deliberations, and what you've heard over these last few weeks from departments and what you've heard here tonight, especially in light of the current environment we find ourselves in. So I'll open discussion with that.
Have we received any any requests from counselors for different budget amendments that they would like to see presented so that it might be talked about just in deliberation here?
Sure. So there are just two that I know of, but I'll turn over to Glennis after. One is there, there has, as was pointed out, there have been discussions from many of you about doing a maintenance of effort budget. And Glennis has crafted, or is the process of crafting one all encompassing amendment that would accomplish just that and getting us to a maintenance of effort budget. Also, Counselor Purdy, I believe, also put forward an amendment to reduce the 50,000 joint projects with the city of Bitterford from 50,000 down to 25,000, which was agreed upon by the, by the joint committee between us and Bitterford. So those are the only two that I know of. I believe Counselor Mintor may have had some others, but I'll turn it over to Glennis if you want to run through the amendments received so far.
Certainly. So I did receive, I know Counselor Mintor had some questions he wanted to ask city staff before putting forward explicit amendments. But I did put forward an amendment for Counselor Mintor that reduced the revaluation by 50% and also reduced use of fund balance by that same amount as an offset. So I believe that was something for him that he was looking forward to seeing in the budget.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Counselor Mintor and then Counselor Copeland?
Yeah, the, the idea behind that is since the economy is in such a turmoil right now, it might be better to hold off on doing the reeval toward the end of the fiscal year 21 as opposed to at the beginning. So when property values may actually be more advantageous to be reevalled if everything drops by some whatever percentage it does. That being said, I don't think it's prudent to not budget some funds toward this. So that we, if we do have a very strained budget in the FY 2122 year, we don't have to fully fund the reeval at that time. So my suggestion was to go ahead and do half now, set it aside. That way it's dedicated and then do the second half in the next fiscal year to kick it off and get it going. Or if it's really bad and we don't know those funds will come back in what year three, they'll come back into the general revenue fund if we don't touch it. But I'd rather have them set aside than leave them in the revenue fund and have our friends on Beach Street think they're available.
Thank you, Counselor Mintor. And Counselor Copeland?
I'm all set. What the information I needed was provided by Counselor Mintor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any suggestions from counselors? Counselor Johnston?
I just have a question about what Counselor Mintor was just speaking of. If we essentially earmark this money at year end, and it's not used, it's going to fall back to the, to the unassigned fund balance. It's not a capital expenditures. So it's not, it doesn't have that three year mark on it.
Let's just-
I think it's, I think it was more just to let people know that we might do this depending on how things play out post-COVID-19. Obviously, if we're in a similar pattern as what we're in now come fall, obviously, then it might not be, it might not be at the right time to start going through that process. But if things come back as some other people have suggested, then, then maybe it's something and there's already some earmarked monies. But in the sense that if it's not used, it would just fall back into the general. Good catch, Nathan. Any further discussions, comments? Counselor Copeland?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to go over the the line items. Well, we don't have to go line items, but I mean generally the raises. I know that we approved 3% and there was a 1.9% last year because that's what we voted on for the budget because that's what the seniors were getting. And then there was a budget amendment in between. And so that should have made 2019 whole. So I can't understand, and I need help understanding this. Why, if that was made whole, because we did the budget amendment to make it whole for the 3%, why is it now 4.1%?
So Glennis, do you want to take that or?
Certainly. Yes, I can take that. So the change, the amendment that the council made would have gone into the fiscal year 2020 budget. So as amendments are made throughout the year, that becomes your fiscal year, fiscal year 2020 budget. But the adopted budget is the number that's in the budget book that forms the basis for that percentage increase. And in the adopted budget, it was the 1.9%. But in the amended budget, there's the additional 1.1%. And so that's why it's a little bit confusing because the printed budget books are all based on the adopted.
And why don't, why don't we base it on the, the actual budget that, you know, as amended? I mean, the, the actual budget?
We could certainly do that for next year's budget book. In the past, I think it was more unusual to have salaries be part of the amendments in the year. More commonly were these one-off things that came up through the year. So you didn't want to start with the amended budget because it had one-offs as opposed to this past year where we did put salaries into the amended budget. But it is council's discretion on what basis the dollar change and percent changes are calculated. And if the council would-
Well, it's-
based on the amended, we could do the amended budget.
Thank you. And I noticed that the percent changes, some of the line items don't have percents. I don't know. It is, I I just think, I don't know why they don't all have percents. Some have none. And the piping plover issue, I know that that we're, we're doing that. And that's a good thing. But how did that job get assigned to one person and their pay increased and we didn't vote on that?
So for that, I'll defer to the city administrator as pay adjustments are the domain of the city administrator.
Thank you. So the information I have right now on that is in May of 2019, under city administrator Kevin Sutherland, this was brought forward to council and approved. There are minutes of that occurring in May of 2019 to offer this, this position, if you want to call it that, and associate stipends to Director Ryan Summer. And I can, I can find those minutes and email them to you to review the record on that. That's the information I have as we, as we speak right now. But I guess I can email the minutes and we can, we can dive deeper.
I don't, I don't know what the amount is, you know, I'm sure. I remember voting that we were going to go forward. I don't, I don't remember the- I don't, I don't know what the amount is, you know, sure. I remember voting that we were going to go forward, but I don't, I don't remember the amount. And now it appears, what's that?
I would think it's probably in the minutes of the discussion.
Well, it's, it's appearing in his in his payroll line where if it's not really his actual payroll, it's a stipend, I think it should be separately designated because otherwise people looking at our books, you know, in future years won't understand why all of a sudden we gave so much. And I just think that, I think it's a separate thing. It's not his normal compensation. So I think it should, you know, it's earned, he should get it, but it should be in a separate line item. I don't like it attached with his regular payroll for transparent.
The stipend was $6,000.
So why do we have that? Because it was specifically for the piping plovers, which is separate from his regular job. I would like that singled out separately.
If I may, I wanted to address the other question that you had, Council Copeland, which was why sometimes the percentage column might be blank in the budget book. And on a quick look, if the prior year approved budget is zero, zero becomes the denominator in the percentage calculation and that calculates to an error. So rather than printing errors or division by zero errors, it's just a blank.
Okay, thank you. No problem.
Are there any other other questions at this time? Any other further deliberation, any quick, any suggestions? Counselor Johnson, then Counselor Minthorne. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Where are we year-to-date with general assistance?
Yes, so we are tracking 3% ahead of forecast on general assistance. General assistance is reimbursed by the state at 70%. So I don't see significant pressure on our budget at this point in time where we are year-to-date through April.
Thank you.
Counselor Minthorne?
Yes, on the four-page amendment to the city administrator's budget that went out today, that was all decrease accounts, I guess this was taking all of the service enhancements back to basically zero or close to zero on most. There were a couple in here that I think we need to take off the list. I believe the, on page one, the two city clerk entries are for the November election and those should be left on there. They're about three quarters of the way down page one on that memo. At the top of page two, am I clear that this is approving two firefighter positions and decreasing two?
So this was prepared on Friday per Nate Johnson's request, so it actually walks back all four firefighters. So every single service enhancement listed in the budget book would be walked back with this amendment. But certainly, I could prepare a version of this amendment for you, Councilor Minthorne, which is just, which only reduces two of the four firefighters and that takes the city clerk service enhancements off the list, therefore thereby leaving them in the budget.
Nate, is that all right with you? My concern on the firefighters was if we have someone who tests COVID positive, we're going to start for, to cover those shifts. So by having the extra firefighters along with, we currently have two firefighters that are out on leave, medical leave for an extended period of time, the combination of the COVID risk, the medical leave current, it would seem prudent to leave two of those in so that we have, we're not short-staffed. And then obviously, we need to be able to conduct the election in November.
So my, my intent was to, again, get down to zero and then, as you know, council, councilors saw fit, we could make amendments to add back in. It just, to me, it just felt or seems easier to get to that zero. So if you wanted to add those additional firefighters back in, you could make an amendment to my original motion.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, I guess the question is for Glennis. Do you view that as the easiest way to do this?
I think we could do it that way. As long as we, as long as councilors are kind of willing to think ahead and let me know, I can prepare the amendments and the order of the amendment. And then it will, and then it will be a little bit easier to follow. So what I'm hearing is we keep this First Amendment as is, as found in Counselor Johnston, and then I could create an amendment to the amendment for Counselor Minthorne that puts the two city clerk entries and two firefighters back in. And then we still have a couple of weeks into budget approval night, so I can continue to create these motions and the flow make sense.
Counselors, as we, as we've talked about in several meetings leading up to this, the more you can do ahead of time by getting your requests to the Finance Director and the City Administrator on what you would like will be helpful in making sure that we don't have a marathon session come the night we actually do have the budget vote. So Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Copeland. Counselor Purdy?
Yeah, just to make sure I understand this, I think it does sound kind of easier if we went with Counsel Johnson's amendment to drop it, drop all the service enhancements and then add them on one by one. It kind of seems to me, given the circumstances, it might be easier to add them on one by one than try to debate and peel off things. I think there's going to probably be less that's added on than we would end up peeling off. Right? Just kind of, I can't allow you. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy, Counselor Copeland, and Counselor Archer. Counselor Copeland first.
Well, I feel like we're at a little bit of a disadvantage here at we got an email and some people had, obviously had a chance to to look at it because I can hear them talking about it. I'm like, what are they talking about? I thought that we were supposed to get, our city administrator was supposed to provide us on Thursday with the materials for the Monday morning meeting. So I'm over here scrambling, trying to see what chart Alan is talking about with all the the things coming off of it. And it's, and now I see here there's a fee schedule change, but there's additions to it, but there's no additions listed. So that caught my eye, but I haven't had a chance to look at this stuff and I find that very frustrating.
I agree, Counselor Copeland. I haven't had a chance to review the email that was sent to me today either, so.
12 attachments, and this is important budget stuff. I'd like to know what additions to the fee schedule are going to be.
I think, I think the saving grace, Counselor Copeland, is that we have a significant amount of time before we actually take a vote on the budget. So we can still review these items and be prepared to have further discussions over the next couple of meetings before we actually get to the, to the 26th. But is there anyone that can answer, answer Counselor Copeland's fee-based questions, Director Salas or City Administrator Canra?
I do apologize. I realize now as we're discussing that I failed to attach the fee schedule, which would include the deletions and additions, so I will do that right now.
Thank you.
I believe the fee schedule was also distributed for the first meeting in April, I think it was April 6th, was part of that presentation. So if you were to look back at those materials, that includes a copy as well. But I will send this to you now so that you have it at the top of your inbox.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Copeland. Two and a half hour, got a 320, three hours is not enough to rush home, well, not rush home from work anymore, but I was working. However, what I was going to actually talk about is more about, or will we talk about piggybacking off Counselor Johnson's. It's just, I think it's a very clean approach. That way, we're not discussing items where the council by default is not really, it's not a really concerned. We don't have to debate items where there's no real contention. Having that amendment specifically identifies that it's important, which then brings up debate rather than us trying to remove things and having to have a conversation every single time. So I think that happened in our last council one, the one that added to about 1:30 with the, with the going into recess. So I think just adding everything that you're interested in, and then that has a conversation, debate. That, I think that's the best approach. So it's more of a process related thing.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Counselor Copeland?
Well, is this a good time? I wanted to continue that conversation about the percent changes of the wages. So I'm looking in Budget Book page number 54. It's the city clerk line item budget. And so if we're, if we're saying that we have, I'm really trying to get to get this, so maybe I'm just off, I don't know. But if it's supposed to be a 3% raise and there are one, two, three, four different expense line, non-supervisory wages, temporary seasonal wages, department head wages, and court officers clerical wages, all the percent changes are different. So who can help me with that?
Finance Director Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city clerk department has had a reorganization. I believe there was some discussion of that where now there's a deputy city clerk as opposed to before there was the deputy city clerk slash GA director. So now there's a deputy city clerk and then a part-time GA director. So it wasn't a significant increase, but it did change how those accounts interacted a little bit and what was paid out of what. Additionally, the city clerk has some wages that are paid out. Specifically, you have your seasonal paid out at minimum wage and minimum wage did go up by about 11%. So any line item where some people are paid at minimum wage would be more than 3% because we have to meet our minimum wage.
I understand that and I, I get that. And I think it's good that we're paying people, you know, on the way toward a livable wage. But so look at the non-supervisory wages. So who would that include that's getting 9.31% change?
So the non-supervisory is both the deputy city clerk and
That's what the deputy is, all right.
And I believe it's the GA director as well. I can review director and the, and the
And what about clerical wages, eight?
That's a part-time person who has a certain number of hours per week. And I can provide more detail about what's going on with the part-time person as a follow-up.
I'm just, just, you know, wages are our biggest expense and I'm just trying to, I think everybody should be paid with their work. I have no problem with that, but I need to understand it better. And like, in our counselor line item budget on page 71 of our budget book, it talks about employee recognition for $4,000?
Yes, so I believe in the past, the council has been really generous to citizens and recognizing them, but there is a cost to the awards, the plaques, to some of the different items that were distributed to people who received awards and recognition.
Right, I think the last mayor gave out T-shirts and so forth. So that's what that is? So it's not actually employee recognition?
No, this is for citizens or any ceremonies the council would like to have.
The category is legislative employee recognition, recognition. So let's just, I didn't understand that one. And I did want to ask, and maybe it's not for Glennis, I don't know, but our DSL fees have gone up 178%. So that caught my eye. I don't know if Mr. Panero was on, if he knows anything about that?
Can you promote IT Director? Brian Panero, please. Thank you. Brian, welcome this evening.
Hi, Ryan.
Hello, hello.
Greetings, Brian. How are you?
Great, how are you? So the DSL fees didn't actually go up. What was happening was the contracted services line and various lines to pay for our pole attachments for the city-owned fiber were in different locations within the budget. So what we did is we made sure that what it costs for us to have internet is all in one single line as opposed to spread out into different lines. So you can see there are other lines that went down to absolute zero.
Okay, thank you. That's a good explanation.
Any, anything further, Counselor Copeland?
No, thank you. Not right now.
Thank you. Any further questions from councilors, suggestions, comments? Seeing no comments, no, no questions, no suggestions. Move on to item 11, the administrative update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, starting off with our senior meals program, we again had a very good week this past Friday. We served approximately 225 meals to seniors in both pickup and delivery. Our numbers, as you know, have seen steady growth over the weeks and we expect about 250 meals for next week. Our next event will be Friday, May 8th, 11 to 12:30. We'll be partnering with Run of the Mill for the meals and the event will be sponsored by Saco Main Street. So thank you to them for their participation. And of course, thank you to all the volunteers and everyone else who has been assisting with this and particularly our Parks and Rec staff, including Amelia Meyer, they've just done a terrific job once again this week. Some updates on the COVID-19 response. Under the new executive order extending the stay safer at home mandates were made the reverse 2020 municipal facilities, with the exception of the transfer station, will remain close to the public through the end of May. We will reassess the situation at that time and update the community members of any changes when appropriate. Seasonal parking meter installation that normally occurs in May will be delayed until June 1st this year to discourage the perception that beach visitation is being encouraged. I know it's been a little bit of a point of contention down near the beach in Camp Ellis. Again, we are continually monitoring the situation. A police department and Parks and Rec are all monitoring the situation. But we don't want the perception out there that we are actually encouraging people to be visiting the beach. And we will again remind all citizens that you should maintain recommended social distance. Speaking also of Camp Ellis and down at the beach, pure use and mooring permit applications are being mailed out by the city's finance department. Anyone held a permit last year, these can be simply mailed back to City Hall. There will be no need to visit the building in person. To recap, also, the city has rolled out a new COVID-19 hotline number for residents of the city to call should they need any assistance or have any questions or specific needs. Again, that number is 207-294-2436, and we are here to help you however we can. Some updates on city personnel, certain city departments, including Public Works, Wastewater Recovery, and Parks and Recreation, we're bringing back staff to more normal scheduling and levels beginning in mid-May. The weather warms, many of our departments do have As the weather warms, many of our departments do have essential duties and obligations to respond to. Guidelines have been developed to ensure strict compliance, with all guidance being put forward by the state and CDC. And then lastly, a reminder that on elections, the state has moved the June primary to July 14th, 2020. The city has two vacant school board seats that will be up on the July 14th ballot nomination papers are due to the city court for those two seats by May 15th. For any interest in candidates, again, that's Ward 1 and 3 for our school board. Happy to take any questions, thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. And just to follow up, each department's hours can be found online at sacomaine.org/hours. So, for anyone that would like to know what the hours are for the individual departments and contact information, please use sacomaine.org/hours. Any questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Counselor Minton, then Counselor Copeland, Counselor Minton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brian, have we thought about how we are going when City Hall first floor actually reopens and we're reprocessing vehicle registrations and that kind of thing in the coming weeks, months? So, how we're going to do traffic patterns and protect employees and all that kind of thing?
So, we have, we have a committee in place right now to review the logistics for first floor operations. When we do reopen, we're going to be meeting, I think, might be tomorrow or Wednesday this week, actually, to begin those discussions. We will obviously have to put in place things like you see at the grocery stores, as far as spacing, if a line were to form, we may have to put up some plexiglass in some places to create a barrier between our employees and the public. So, yes, absolutely, those discussions have begun, a committee has been formed, and we are completely in progress of preparing for that when it happens, possibly as early as the first week of June. So, we're on that, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Minton, thank you, City Administrator Kenrath, Counselor Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kenrath, thank you for advocating for not everyone to rush to the beach, that is a neighborhood and people are there. Is the 14-day...
Quarantine.
Quarantine in effect for people from out of state still? Meaning that people who come across the state lines should not go to our grocery stores, should not, they should bring whatever they need and stay inside the house, not at the beach? Is that still in place?
That's correct, Counselor Copeland, then that 14-day quarantine is in place, I believe, also in phases two and three of the governor's reopening plan. So, that 14-day quarantine for out-of-state people coming to Maine to visit or to come to your, your second home they may have here is in place for the foreseeable future. We would hope all, all those people are abiding by that order to guarantee the safety of our residents as well as themselves, so thank you.
And once the, you know, once every, the quarantine is over, everyone is supposed to be wearing masks, is that true?
Right now, there's, right now, there is guidance from the state that you are supposed to be wearing a mask in, in public places. I believe that also goes through the various phases of the governor's reopening plan, so that is in place also, so that is another reminder to put out there to everyone.
And staying six feet apart, is that still part of the order?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you, because I know we have an immune, an amazing city, and part of it is this waterfront. And I know that everyone wants to get to Hewitts, even though they're just doing takeout. But this weekend, it was as if it was July down there. And so, I just want everyone to know that, that, that these things are still in place, and, and we respectfully request that you keep yourself and us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any further questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Seeing no further questions, moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion at this moment in time? Counsel McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind our residents that as of April 1st, we started our leash law for the summer. The piping plover season has started. Park and Rec volunteers and monitors are now on the beach, and we have had the luck of seeing a few plovers in the Kenny Shore area. So, be on the lookout for them. Fencing will be going up once we have active nesting starting. So, again, from April 1st to September 31st, the leash ordinance is in effect. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel McPhail, Counsel Archer.
Yeah, Counsel Archer. Sorry, I was trying to come to the mute.
Yeah.
I was trying to, to think, I know that schools, the school department was going to look at their budget again, are you aware if they're coming back with any suggestions? Or that the school budget as presented?
We will be seeing the school budget come before the council next week.
Okay.
For consideration.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Minton.
Yes, I just wanted to drop my phone. I just wanted to acknowledge Senator Shanet's completion of a certificate in government leadership program at Harvard University John F. Kennedy School. So, congratulations to Justin on another item on the belt.
Thank you, Counselor Minton. Any further discussion and comment? Seeing no further discussion and comment. Is there a motion to enter into executive session, which is item 13?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. The order, the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056A Personnel Update.
Sarah Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7:00 to enter executive session for personnel update at 7:48 PM. Counselors, please go over to the link that was sent to you by City Administrator Kenrath earlier today. Andrew, we're on our way back. We're just waiting for Councilor Archer. Councilor Archer has joined us. With that, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, be it ordered, the city council exit executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405-6A Personnel Update.
Sarah Second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero to exit executive session at 8:04 PM. Councilor Minton, is there a report from executive session?
There is no report, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no report, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Minton, second by Councilor Copeland. Any objection? Seeing no, roll, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero, we are adjourned at 8:05 PM. Again, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. Have a great evening.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Good night, be safe.
Good night.